Good afternoon. I'd like to call the budget hearing to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Mayor Potem Dominguez.
Here.
Mayor Snyder.
Here.
Councilmember Rose.
Here.
Councilmember Hart.
Here.
Councilmember Maria.
Here.
Councilmember White and Councilmember Hotchkiss not present.
Okay. I don't see any public comment, speaker slips for items not on the agenda, so we'll go to first our fire department. Chief McElroy, welcome. Thank you.
Rookie mistake. Our Administrative Services Manager, Ron Lickety, from our Wildland Division, and Marx from Training, Chris Miles, and from Operations, Battalion Chief Robert Mercado. And we're going to go over our recommended budget for fiscal year 2018. What we would like to do is I'm going to go over the first part of the presentation and then turn over different parts of it to Ron and then to Joe, and everybody in the staff will be available for questions pertaining to their area of expertise. So we're going to have a go-to-fire department overview, a proposal for fiscal year 2018, some proposed fee changes, some key initiatives and performance objectives. And this year, we want to focus on the fire inspection program. We've had, in California, some tragedies over the past years, particularly in Oakland, and we want to talk about how our program works here, how we feel really confident we don't, we're not going to have those types of problems, and how we handle them. And it's just, it's a part of our operation that doesn't get a lot of attention on a routine basis, and we just figured this would be a good time to highlight that program and how it works. So our mission statement is we, the members of the Santa Barbara City Fire Department, are committed to ensuring the safety and protection of our community through the preservation of life, property, and the environment. And our vision is to be leaders, to be leaders in the fire service by making a positive difference and being proactive to the ever-changing needs of our community through utilizing and developing our members and resources to their highest potential. These are the values that we instill into our members of duty, respect, integrity, and innovation, and we're extremely proud of the level of candidates that we are hiring. It's an extremely competitive department, really highly regarded department, and it's reflected in the quality of people that we're hiring. We just want to review our organizational chart. It's, I think with one exception, it's identical to it's been, how it's been the last two years. We have two divisions, the operations and the prevention division that work directly under myself and my executive assistant. In addition, we have the Administrative Services Manager and Emergency Services Manager. Ron runs the administrative services, and Yolanda McGlinchey is our Emergency Services Manager and handles the OES function and its relationship to the county, and thus the state and the feds. Our operations division chief, Lee Waldron, is just returning from vacation, and he's not here today, but he is in charge of what the public sees in the fire engines and in the eight stations that we have. So he's responsible for the daily operations of the eight fire stations and their responses to calls, and also he's responsible for the training division. Our training division does upwards of about 30,000 hours of training and operations personnel per year, and we have about 90 people, so it's a significant portion of what we do. Over the past decade and certainly over the last five years, we've done some changes in our records management system and changes in how we do training. Ron has broken out training as its own fund, so we have better idea of what it's costing us. And also, through our records management system, we're able to, if there's an accident, God forbid, or something serious injury, we can immediately pull up every hour of every day of a person that's been working for us and all of their training. And we use a records management system called Firehouse. We have for about 14 years now, so we have really, really detailed records. When, for example, City Gate was here looking at our fire operation out at the airport, they were surprised at how easy it was to access everybody's records, everybody's training records. So that consists of three different battalions, and the, like I said, the training division is operations. Joe Pori runs our prevention division, and that's our wildland inspector, our fire services specialist, and also they are inspectors and our investigators. And that also houses the wildfire benefit assessment district is run out of that division as well. So we work 48-hour shifts at eight stations, so what's called a 48-96. We have, on each day, we have 29 assigned positions. We are a constant staffing department, so 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. You will have a battalion chief who's in charge of the operations for that period of time. We run a three-person engine model at seven stations. And in addition to that, at Station One, we run a four-person squad truck rescue crew. So there's three vehicles that, depending on the type of call that they respond to, the squad and the truck will go out with four people. Squad is like a heavy rescue, an urban search and rescue vehicle, heavily tool-laden, no pump, no ladders. It's a real working truck. The ladder truck is also a truck with no water or pump on it, 100-foot aerial, and they respond, the squad or the truck respond to any major traffic accident, all fires, any special rescues, water rescues, major vehicle accidents. And then the rescue crew will respond separately with a two-person, two-person crew mainly in the downtown area for all medical emergencies. So it gives us a smaller, lighter vehicle that can access the downtown streets in a much more efficient manner than a full-engine company. So as I said, our minimum staffing is 29 per day. This is our fleet. We have, working with Public Works and the Fleet Division, we've spent a lot of time over the past few years on looking at our fleet and involving ourselves, probably to a degree that Public Works wasn't real thrilled with at the beginning, but I think that we think it's an important function of what we do. Our trucks are what we do, our vehicles are what we do. Form is function for us. And so we've spent a lot of time with Fleet over the last few years, looking at trends that are out in our world, especially in California and wildfires, what type of trucks are similar departments buying, and what are trucks that we're going to be using in the future? Should we be replacing like-for-like, or should we be looking for different types of trucks? But basically, our frontline engines, we have seven frontline engines out of the 14 there. In addition to that, we have four reserve engines. We have two Type III wildland engines, and then, and we have just taken delivery of what's called a Type VI engine, which is a, a Type I engine is our main, that's our standard structure firefighting engine. A Type III is a shorter wheelbase, higher sitting vehicle that specializes in wildland response. We bought our first one about 15 years ago. We've increased the fleet to include another one because of the type of calls that we're getting in our front country, and also the type of calls we're getting, requests for mutual aid, Type IIs are becoming the dominant thing that we're asked for in mutual aid. Type I have become mainly a structure-protection engine in a wildfire. The Type VI, that we traded in some sedans and readjusted our fleet to get a Type VI engine, and that is an even smaller version of a Type III, where you're going off-road, you're going into areas where you're not, it's not practical to have the larger engines, and they're kind of the emerging new vehicle in the fire service. And, for example, Montecito Fire has two now, Carpinteria is ordering one. I'm not sure where the county is with now, but Los Angeles County, Ventura County. So we're looking at what other agencies are doing, and we're trying to, frankly, we're trying to leave the next generation that comes along behind us with an appropriate fleet. In addition to that, we have two ladder trucks due to some grants through the Firefighters Alliance, the CHUMASH Foundation. We have trucks that when our first one goes out, we're first going to say it out on a call, and we have to go to our reserve, they're equipped exactly the same. So there's no downgrading of equipment, there's no, we don't have to switch things off like we used to. When something was going into the shop, we'd have to take, say, for example, Jaws of Life or some other equipment. Right, the next, if we have to move to our reserve truck, it's fully equipped, ready to go, we just staff it and it's ready to go. We also provide with that truck, we provide automatic aid service to Carpinteria and Montecito Fire Protection Districts and also Santa Barbara County. In addition to that, we have three specialized rigs, the Hazmat, which is based at Station Two, the Heavy Rescue, which I talked about a little earlier, is at Station One, and our Special Response Unit, which is basically a mass casualty unit, and that's at the airport for obvious reasons. If we're going to have a low-frequency, high-risk incident, the airport would seem to be the logical place, so that's where that station is as well. We have two patrols, which we have staffed for different things throughout the year. They're primarily a wildfire response, but this year, they were active when we had flooding. It's a two-person, four-wheel-drive vehicle, and they, we put them into use frequently. Also have four utility vehicles, and at our aircraft rescue and firefighting station, Station Eight, we have two crash trucks and also a rescue out there. And then between the rest of the staff with SUVs, sedans, for all the chiefs and inspectors, we have 15 other vehicles, a total of 44. To give you an idea of the lifespan of some of the engines, today, at Station Five on Modoc Road, we're using Engine Five Reserve, which was purchased in 1989. So we're looking at vehicles with an extremely long lifespan, so that's a 27, approaching 28-year vehicle. It'll be the next one replaced, and that, I think 130,000 miles over 27 years, which is, which is, once you go into reserve status, which we do for 10 years, the mileage drops, but it's still, if there's a structure fire in that area today that's responding, it's functional and good to go. Next, Ron. So I'll turn it over at this point to Ron for our financial plan.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Ron Lickety, Administrative Fire Services Manager at the Fire Department, and I want to talk to you a few slides about some of our numbers. So for fiscal year 2018, we have a total budget of just under $27 million, and our accounting is set up into three funds, of the General Fund, the Fire Equipment Fund, and the Wildland Suppression Fund, and the vast majority of this is the General Fund. Here's a look at our proposed expenditures, and we're looking at the increases and decreases from the fiscal year '17 budget to the recommended '18 budget. And the first line we can talk about is the salaries and benefits. Here we see a 5.4% increase, about $1.2 million, and this increase is due mostly to salary increases per our MOU and a modest budgetary assumption of 1% going forward. We've also, another reason for the increase in salary and benefits is PERS. About $800,000 of this is due to PERS increases, and that's due to their rates and revisions as we get them. Our supplies and services number is going down $40,000, just about 5%, and most of this is, the reason why it's been reduced is special projects for vegetation removal is part of this. In fiscal year '17, we were using one-time monies, reserves, for vegetation removal, and those monies, now that they've been spent, we don't have them available for '18. But in other cases, most of the salaries, supplies, and services are remaining the Allocated costs are also being reduced by 8%, about $200,000. Now, this is again, most of this reduction is really about $160,000 that we have transferred from the General Fund into our vehicle replacement fund. We've spent $160,000, that was monies generated that we had from our mutual aid activities from the previous year, and we're able to devote those to the vehicle replacement fund. We don't know what those numbers were going to be exactly for fiscal year '18, so that's why our budget's reduced for '18. Equipment is also being reduced, about $45,000, and this again is due to, in fiscal year '17, we had a major program that's ending in '18. Fiscal year '17, we're replacing our mobile data computers on all of our fire engines and rescue equipment, and that was about a $200,000 project that we're, you know, spending the money here in '17 that we won't be spending in '18. So that's the reason for that reduction. Overall, it's an increase to the expenditures of about 2.9%. Now I'll take a look at our revenues. And our first revenue is our inter-fund reimbursement revenue, and this is primarily the revenues generated from our services that we provide to the airports. And this increase we see of 5.9%, coincides with our salary and benefits increase. Most of our costs to the airport are salary and benefits, so the increase is to salary and benefits increases the reimbursement rate we receive back from the airport. Mutual aid, we're not proposing any increase or decrease to our $600,000 recommended revenues, though in fiscal year '17, we're projecting to actually receive almost triple that number of $1.8 million, and we've had a very active fire season, and we're looking, and that'll help out our budget for the end of fiscal year '17. It's not appropriate to probably increase our recommended budget for '18 because the monies, if there isn't the calls for request for service, we're spending money we may not actually be generating. American Medical Response, our fees we get from that company per our contract, and they have annual changes to the contract, and this year was about 4% increase, so we're budgeting those revenues appropriately. Fees and service charges are going down about 18%, or 7%, 8%, about $17,000, and most fees and services are maintaining equal, but one of the components of this, as we've talked about in our fee presentation, is that our engine company fire inspection program is taking some properties, some commercial occupancies, off the rolls, and it's reducing our inspection program fees. And Joe Pori will be speaking more to our inspection program later. Our sales tax revenues have a modest decrease of 1% due to finance projections, and our wildland fire assessment revenues are projected to increase about 2.4% per an engineer's report per our contract or per our assessment district mandates. We have a number of deferred, delayed, suspended cuts that the Fire Department would like to see, but we're not going to be requesting this year. And the first one is the fire alerting, the fire station alerting system. The cost to implement that would be just under $400,000. We're deferring that. Fire Station Seven, we're deferring $180,000 for going forward with that project. I think maybe the chief might have something to say.
We're, Madam Mayor, Council, we're, this is a particular, it's kind of a pet project of mine, but we're dealing with a partnership with the feds right now, and it's the status as a result of the election of November. We're still trying to figure out where the USDA, the Forest Service is part of the USDA, which a lot of people aren't aware of, we're trying to figure out where their direction is with that project. One of the, one of our allies in that project was Los Padres National Forest Superintendent Bob Baird, who has recently left the forest, but we think it's going to, we think it's a good thing for us. He's now going to be in charge of all the fire operations for the Western United States. So in his new position, as that thing settle out, I think we're going to have an ally and with a lot more decision-making power to move forward with that, with that station. So I was comfortable waiting, waiting for that thing to settle, settle down at the federal level before we moved anything further. And then I'll address these, the others, if you care, Ron. We've also delayed our firefighter academy to fiscal year '19. That's a real fine balancing thing. We don't want to hire before we have to, but we don't want to hire until we can see four to six positions. It isn't cost-efficient to hire before that, but like I said, it's a balancing act. We got ourselves in trouble a couple of years ago, where due to a number of injuries and unfortunately a death, we ended up really short during fire season and had a real critical staffing situation. So it's something that we monitor constantly. It's part of every monthly conversation I have with Mr. Casey, but we feel comfortable, we could start the process in fiscal year '18 without incurring a lot of cost, and, but we would, we would prefer to start in '19, but we'll see how the year progresses. And we have a public education coordinator position that remains on our wish list, but we just don't see that happening right now in the current budget situation. We're filling that with a hourly, hourly position now. We had, I don't know if you, many of you are familiar with Luliana Encinas, she's taken a job with the city of Galita, so we're, we have somebody else in place now, and so we're moving forward with that.
Madam Mayor, City Council. So now we'll take a look at some of our proposed fee changes, and we talked about it finance committee. We're rounding, we're increasing our fees about 3% this year to go with our cost increases and rounding them to the nearest dollar. As I previously mentioned, we're removing some small space commercial occupancies from inspections and replacing those with a whole building shell inspection. This is an example of some of our proposed fees. One of our most used fees is our fee for inspecting apartments and hotels from three to nine units. As you can see, it's a modest increase of $1 for that inspection. And also to note is we've added this new shell inspection fee of $75. Next, we'd like to talk about some key initiatives, some work objectives, and performance measures. These are some examples of some of the, some of the project objectives we have in our budget. We're increasing our radio coverage and reliability from, for areas that, at the beach and from UCSB and from the Channel Islands to get better radio coverage down there.
We've started, excuse me, Ron, Madam Mayor, Council, we've started a, working with facilities and a radio shop. We've put a repeater out at UCSB, which allows us to pick up better reception at the, at the airport, but also along the coast, so along towards Henry Beach, Henry's Beach and the Mesa. We've had some problems in those areas, and we've worked really well with facilities and really, really pleased with the work we've been doing with facilities and the radio shop. And so our radio system is much more robust. We replaced a lot of our microwave systems over the past couple of years, and that's, that's working out very well for us. I'm going to skip the paper street files because I'd like Joe to address that. But we are replacing, the next engine we're replacing will be at fire station number three. For those of you who are familiar with Station Three, it presents some unique challenges as a historical building, built in 1929. The current engine has, I believe, an inch and a half clearance on each side of the, each side of the engine to get through the doors. So it's, it's a challenging situation, so we're going to be looking for a vehicle that will, will fit there. That is also where our smaller Type VI engine will be, will be placed too, because it fits perfectly in that, in that area. And as we develop the uses for that, that's, that's where it's currently going to be based out of. And also, we are conducting live-fire training in, for, in a regional basis. I'm sure many of you are aware, we installed some live-fire training props rather than repair our four-story concrete tower. We are using something basically with Connex boxes. It was a public-private partnership. We received some, about $200,000 in grant money. Also, Santa Barbara County and Montecito Fire Protection District contributed some money. So we do mandatory live-fire training in there. It's a really, really, really interesting, interesting prop because it allows somebody to be in a burning building, but the way the temperature is controlled, you can actually have an instructor in there talking to the class as the fire's rolling over people, and it's, so it gets people used to being in a fire and also lets them recognize, okay, this is when things are going bad, when you're noticing these type of telltale signs in the flames. So it's been a really valuable tool, and it is a regional, is a regional prop. And we've also worked, the crews at Station Eight have developed FAA mandated training program, and we were just, they were just recognized with an award for the quality of the training program, and they're very proud of that. If you want to conduct on the paper-file conversion.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Joe Pori, City Fire Marshal. Converting the paper records that we were talking about, we have old archival records that were formerly kept in each fire station. Each engine has their district, and they used to go out on inspections, make a paper record of it, or they'd make paper records of fires and other events that they went to, and they would store them in these filing cabinets. Many of them are archival in nature in that we often go back to them to search for old gas stations that used to be on a site for environmental companies, for example. So they still have value to us. They do take up quite a bit of space, and our goal here is to scan them all into a searchable database that we can come up with these, these files and individual addresses and site locations based on APN, similar to the LDT archives and the way that database works, so that when we do have to search these records, we can search them faster, we can print copies much quicker, and we can get them out to the requesting party or for our own research. And that way, at some point, we can dispense with them. Most of these files are quite old. Some of them might even be a little on the historical side. So we'd like to get them digitized as soon as we can. That's the goal of that project. And I guess as long as I'm at the mic, may as well continue with the inspection program. As Chief McElroy was alluding to a little bit earlier, the reason that we want to highlight this, in the past, we've talked about wildland, we've covered investigations, various other aspects of the Fire Prevention Bureau, and this year, we wanted to touch on the inspection program, in part because we changed it a little bit, we fine-tuned it, and also because we've been getting a lot of questions this year from the public at large on different things that have happened elsewhere in California. And what comes to mind immediately is the Ghost Ship incident in Oakland. And what comes to mind immediately is the Ghost Ship incident in Oakland. But we always get these kinds of questions when there's a large nightclub fire or disaster or some other incident where fire inspection might have played a role or might have even prevented a disaster from occurring in the first place. So we'd like to explain a little bit about how the fire prevention inspection program works. And we'll do that by, first of all, explaining that there are two components. The routine inspections are generally conducted by engine companies. These are the day-to-day, go around your district, get familiar with your district, see what businesses are there and conduct routine fire inspections. The more complex inspections are conducted by members of the Prevention Bureau. And by that, I mean the annual inspections of assembly occupancies, state licensed facilities and, and everything from high rises to theaters to nightclubs. We have had an ongoing issue with a very small, low-risk occupancies. And the type of occupancy I'm referring to, what we would call B occupancies, they're businesses, small, for instance, a, a single office, single accountant firm, where there's one person in the office. It'll be inside of a larger shell building and we'll go into the building and to conduct an inspection. In the past, we were, these types of inspections are basically seconds in length. The, the office is so small that you don't have to spend any time on it at all. It's really not much of an inspection challenge, but it is within the shell of a larger building. So the firefighters are already there. They're conducting the, the shell inspection. And in the past, when we, when we inspected these very small occupancies, we would often get complaints because every time we inspect an occupancy, along comes the fire department fee in the mail and, and they go, well, what happened here? Then, you know, these guys were only here for a couple of minutes. And yet, you know, we would inspect the shell, we would inspect the occupancy. And so we started thinking that based on time constraints and inefficiency of the operation, that if we eliminated the fee, we were going to be inspecting the building anyway. We're going to be in the building. So we could eliminate the very small B occupancies from the inspection program. It would leave us more time to be more efficient with the more hazardous occupancies. And as I was saying before, these are mostly, these are the small B occupancies. It doesn't affect A's, assembly occupancies. It doesn't affect hazardous occupancies. It doesn't affect schools or licensed facilities or anything else. These are just the very small offices. And again, so we're still inspecting the building. We're going to be in the building. We, and we, and now we'll be inspecting it on a shell basis and inspect the shell of the building. In mixed occupancies, for instance, if you have an assembly on one side, a little factory on the other side and a small B office in the middle, the B office will not be charged for the fee. We'll still be inspecting the building and we'll be inspecting the assembly thoroughly. We'll be inspecting the factory thoroughly, but the B will, will for the most part, you know, just poke our head in the door and say, hey. And if that person exists, we will conduct a full inspection of their, their small office as well at no charge. So going back to recent disasters, the kinds that we get questions on, the types of things that, that happen, and, and this can happen to any department, anywhere, you know, when you see these things come up, they happen in every size department from volunteer fire departments all the way up to the largest departments in the country. But it usually occurs in a building where the use has been changed on the fly, where ad hoc uses have come up inside a building that, that was formerly intended for something else. A good example of that is a factory that's been cut up into a different illegal, you know, partitions where they're conducting everything from spray painting to sleeping quarters. Those are the kinds of things that, that happen generally on, that fly under the radar if we're not out doing our inspections. So if done under a permit, a lot of times, these types of occupancies can be made legal. It just depends. And, and our, our goal when we come across them, and we come across quite a few of them, is to try to figure out, is there any way that whatever use they've changed it to can be made legal? But the hazards are that if they're side-by-side incompatible uses, you know, there's oftentimes, you know, no way to, to legalize it. For instance, making a residence in, inside of a factory is just, you know, we come across that every once in a while. We come across people who have carved out residences in body shops, for example, those kinds of things. And we abate those on a regular basis. So how do we become aware of these things? First of all, inspectors have very sharp eyes. We come across a lot of them from inspectors in the field who are actually working on something else and see something that they haven't seen before in their district that looks out of place or a building that looks like it's gone through some kind of conversion. Engine companies refer a lot of them to us. They're particularly what we call IDUs, illegal dwelling units. They'll go out on a medical emergency or some other type of call and stumble across an inappropriate living situation or a dangerous living situation and refer it to us. Other city divisions, the Police Department, Building Division, Zoning, Public Works, all send us referrals, usually by way of the Advantage software that we all share. And we, we get a certain number of complaints. People will call us up and tip us off. One of the newer ways that we approach this, this issue is by internet trolling, which is something that our inspectors do on a regular basis now. We found that places that we never heard of before, if we type in keywords like entertainment in Santa Barbara, dancing in Santa Barbara, even raves in Santa Barbara, those types of things, that we'll come up with a myriad of, of responses. And we'll look through them and a lot of times, you know, well, okay, we know about that place. That's legal, that's legal. And then we'll come across one that will stand out. And I have a picture of one of those up here. I also want to say, if you could go back to that slide, one of the other ways that, that we find out about things is the people now call us themselves before they enter an illegal occupancy. And part of the reason for that is because of the city's new website, Starting and Growing Your Business in Santa Barbara, that Nina Johnson actually spearheaded not too long ago. People actually are going to the website. I've gotten a couple of calls. And what was happening before is people would go into an agreement with a landlord, they would sign the lease, and then they'd, you know, realize too late when we showed up that they were in the wrong occupancy, that they needed a, a $100,000 sprinkler system or that they couldn't have an assembly in this occupancy period because they didn't have adequate exiting or something like that. So it, it, this website, the, the page that, Starting and Growing Your Own Business and the brochures that go with it have been helpful because we have been getting calls on it. And it, and we've directed people away from situations where they shouldn't be. So we, among the hazards that we look at a lot, existing clubs, assembly occupancies, overcrowded bars and blocked exits, the nightclub district is, is always a big concern to us. Annually, inspectors go out, we make contact with all the bar owners, we make sure that their occupant load signs are up, their exits are intact, and we make sure that they understand what the rules are. It's a pretty big ticket, as you probably know, if, if a bar overcrowds. And we also have the ability to, to shut the bar down. Industrial buildings, particularly Lower East Side, where they have multiple occupants, that's probably the most common place where we see illegal construction. It does come up. The Funk Zone has been a, a big customer of ours lately. Ad hoc assemblies, not appropriate to the lease space, that happens quite a bit, particularly again in warehouses. And special events. This is an example of a web trolling hit that we got.
We have a question, hold on just a second.
What does that mean, ad hoc assemblies? Is that what you've been talking about?
Well, that's where, where, yeah, that, that type of thing. Or, and you'll see it if you, if you come across an internet page where they're advertising a one-night party, for example, and it's in a building that's, that's inappropriate to, to having, say, 400 or 500 people. You know, they'll, they'll, they have to get the word out somehow. And, you know, hopefully they get the word out to us before they actually do it. Because a lot of times, these are assemblies that are occurring in buildings that are inappropriate. They don't have adequate exiting or, or they're basically just dangerous.
Thank you.
That's exactly what happened in Oakland. You know, that was an advertised event and people knew about that and it, it had happened repeatedly. And that, we don't want to find ourselves in the position that the city of Oakland is going to be dealing with for the, for the next decade at least, where you, you put, you put several hundred people in an unsafe environment, something goes wrong and what happened, happened. And people having the best of intentions are, are putting people in, in severe life danger.
And, and they're not all real scary looking. For instance, this one here, and the names have been removed, this is no longer an enforcement case, this is kind of history, but it's, it's an example of web trolling where this was basically a warehouse at one point. And they're advertising for wedding receptions and that kind of thing. As you can see, it's well done, it looks pretty nice, there's art on the walls and so forth. But at the time that we discovered it, and it was Amber Anderson happened to be trolling that day, she came across it and looked at the picture. And if you see the arrow on the far side, the arrow's pointing to panic hardware. The, the problem with the panic hardware is it's on the wrong side of the door. And that told Amber that there's something wrong here, there's, there's a problem with this assembly. And looking through the LDT archives, couldn't find an, an actual permit to create an assembly out of this space. So she went over there and paid them a visit. But the other side to that panic hardware thing is, not only is it on the wrong side of the door for the people who happen, and this is a 400-person occupancy, but not only is it on the wrong side for these people, but that panic hardware means that they are in the exiting system of somebody else. Whoever was occupying the space next door needs that panic hardware to get out of their own space. And so Amber got in the car and went out there and, and basically made the situation right. And, but this is the kind of thing, it looks pretty subtle and this occupancy doesn't look particularly dangerous, but you, you have to take the building as a whole and look at what's on the other side of that wall. Who needs that panic hardware for something? So, you know, typically what we do is we issue warnings and then notices of violations and then ultimately it can lead up to a citation. And, and that's basically how we abate these things. And by the time it gets to a citation, it's probably in the city attorney's office. On rare occasions, for instance, overcrowding, we may take our citations to the DA's office and make a criminal case out of it. Another example, perfectly legal occupancy on the left, but advertising to do an illegal thing. They're turning it into an assembly for one night. And under special conditions, you can do that, but you have to get a permit to do it. That's part of the permitting process. And then while checking that out, stumbling across illegal construction in, in the same And then some of the other things that we've come across, particularly in these factories and warehouses, you can just get the general idea, blocked exits, overcrowding, inappropriate storage and storage that would be not just dangerous to people working in the building, but also if a building were to catch fire, dangerous to firefighters because of the huge amount of combustibles stored in inappropriate ways. Illegal dwelling units, we have, the most common illegal dwelling units that we come across are in actual residential occupancies. And the part that makes this tricky is that most of them are single-family homes and they may have a shed in the back or they may have a garage or something else. And, and we find out about them through firefighters usually, or unfortunately every once in a while through a fire. Sometimes they're occupancies within occupancies, as we were talking about, they can be in commercial, industrial, mixed use. And we look for signs of habitation. They're pretty good at concealing it from time to time, but you can generally tell if somebody's living in an inappropriate occupancy. And then finally, alternative lifestyle and homeless people are the most difficult of all to discover, as you, as I'm sure you know. The, on the left, we have a fatality that occurred in an open storage yard, which is something that, you know, the engine companies would go by during the day, but typically when, when a person would enter an open storage yard to sleep at night, it, it would be unnoticed by anybody, including us. And then on the right, a recent fatality in Caltrans, five foot in diameter drainage pipe. And, you know, these, again, a homeless issue, something that's, that's very hard for us to keep track of, but we do our best on that. So what do we do about it? We partner with other agencies, other city divisions. We have that shared database. Currently, it's Advantage, soon to be Excella. The Excella database will enhance our ability to create what we call ENF cases or enforcement cases. And we can share on the fly in, in real time with Excella, with other inspectors from other divisions, zoning, building, and, and, you know, other, other agencies in the city so that we can find out if we're out of place and we don't necessarily see a fire issue, we can notify someone because it might be a zoning issue. Likewise, zoning stumbles across something in the field, it might be a fire issue, they can let us know. And we'll be able to send, you know, post pictures on, on Excella and, kind of excited to get that, that software going, probably in late November. And then we conduct abatement procedures as needed, everything from citations to ending the occupancy to, to closing it down. And that's, I think that is the end of the fire department presentation.
We have some lights on. Mr. Hart?
I just had a question about how much revenue approximately is going to be lost to eliminating the B inspection fee?
I think Ron might be able to handle that one a little bit better, so I'm going to pass that to him. But we, there's a component to that that we don't know yet, and that's what the, the shell figure is going to be. But let me pass that to him.
Yes, we're expecting about $5,000 in, in new shell fee revenues and perhaps about $15,000 not received for those small space occupancies.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Regarding inspections and certainly dangerous circumstances, I know that from time to time we had methane or hash oil labs or whatnot that had caused fires. Is that something you've seen settle down? I know there was a few years there where you had a few of them. And I don't know if the protocols or the neighbors report extra wires going into a garage or a smell, but is that something you've seen tick up or tick down in your inspection world lately?
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Rouse, I don't really know the answer to that question, but I've noticed the same slowdown that you have. We did actually get a couple of honey oil labs that basically blew up and, and, you know, by the time firefighters got there, the, the building was fully involved. We haven't seen one for a while. And it may be that, that you have to store quite a lot of butane and it's cumbersome and, and, you know, difficult to manage and, and it's really obvious. So maybe the public has become more aware and they've taken their operations outside of urban areas.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, I noticed that, I want to reaffirm what Joe said. You're finding that more in a lot more rural areas where there's, there's less people looking and they're not noticing smells, they're not noticing the type of storage that's going on. It's one of the things that we're encountering on incident management teams in remote areas. I mean wilderness areas of California. They used to say, these are things that you've, we want you to look out for. There's, there's grizzly bears, there's endangered species. And invariably, in almost every forest you go into now is drug labs. And we're talking about incredibly, incredibly remote areas, and that's one of the first hazards that they talk about is you're going to encounter drug labs. So GPS it and walk away and they'll have somebody else deal with it.
And then slightly off that topic, regarding your, the AMR contract, and I know that a large percentage of your responses are medical responses, but your vehicles are all fire response vehicles, not necessarily medical response vehicles. The contract reimbursement that you have with AMR, is that full cost recovery for the fire department in terms of what you do and provide and what they get, they reimburse you for? As I understand it, I think you guys are more than likely the first responders and then they're the transport company. Is that, how that works and is that, I mean, how does that all work out when, when it comes down to the end of the day in terms of your, your reimbursement for the department?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, we are about 18 months. I'm, I'm currently the president of the Santa Barbara County Fire Chiefs Association. We've had a working group together for about 18 months. The ambulance contract was due to expire at the end of, Chris, I'm correct, the end of this year, correct? End of this year. We worked with the county for a two-year extension. The contract is currently held by a American Medical Response. We are, we are looking at that whole system from top to bottom in terms of how healthcare is provided nationally, what the insurance companies are looking for. We're looking at the type of model that we're delivering as. We're looking at the type of model that we're delivering, and it will be efficient and will be cost-efficient in the future. And so it's going to be a very large part of what this department will be talking to council and the administrator's office over the next two years. We're meeting with the LMSA, which is the County Emergency Medical Services Agency. We met yesterday. We're going to meet tomorrow as well. So this is, it's an ongoing conversation about how that contract is held and who is a party to it. And we're expecting some changes to that. But we feel like this is a really critical time, and we have an opportunity here, not only City Santa Barbara, but all the government agencies in Santa Barbara, to look at how health care is provided in Santa Barbara. And also, within this whole look at EMS, it's, I think it's, we'd be short-sighted to look at it as just fire and ambulance. I think we want to look at things like restorative policing. We want to look at homeless issues. We want to look at sobering centers. So there's a lot of things that are involved in this. And if we look at this as less an EMS problem and as a health care problem for Santa Barbara County, I think, I think it's going to be a really great discussion. It's going to be a really important discussion. And that's why we pushed so hard for the two-year extension, so that everybody in local government can take a look at it, along with Cottage Hospital in Sansom, and American Medical Response, and the county. But it is the emerging issue in the fire service in California and nationally.
So it'll be typical that most fire services, at least urban fire services, provide a lot of medical, or a high percentage of the medical response?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, that's, it's upwards of 70% for us. And just because of the nature of how fire stations are located, as opposed to the situation status of a private company providing ambulances, there's, AMR does a great job. It's a good company. And, but we think that there's opportunity here, just because of how stations are placed. There's, just the numbers would tell you, if there's four or five ambulances on the South Coast and 14, 15 fire stations, the chances are, we're going to be arriving first. And if we look at the, every afternoon, the freeway between Carpinteria and Galita, and the ambulance is trying to make it from, say, Carpinteria to the west side of Santa Barbara, there's ways that we can work more efficiently, and that includes working more efficiently with AMR as well.
Thank you, Chief.
I hope that answers, does that answer your question?
Mr. Dominguez.
Kind of along the same line of questions. At the Public Works Budget Workshop, one of the stats was that it costs, I think, $4.05 for every mile for some of the big trucks. Now, are some of these trucks responding to the calls that Mr. Rouse was asking about? Is that the same scenarios, or is that a different situation?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, yeah, they are responding in their districts to, it's the most appropriate, the closest resource will be responding. And like I said, in the downtown area, we have a rescue, just because it works better in the downtown thing. But say, like, on the west side or the Mesa, Engine Six or Engine Five will be responding to all calls in that area.
And why do you use engines and not the, some of the other vehicles that you had on your list?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, the principle of how we staff an engine is, the engine wherever it is, and we're able to now with AVLs, which are automatic vehicle locators, the dispatchers can see where each vehicle is. The staffing that we use on an engine, a two-person, a three-person engine, is able to respond to every type of call within its district. So if it's a fire, if it's a hazmat incident, if it's a traffic accident, if it's a medical emergency, they're able to respond with that unit. If we have them adjust to a smaller engine, say a utility truck, and respond with that same crew or a smaller, or a smaller crew, say you've got, Engine Six goes to an accident at the playground on Cliff Drive. And then from there, they get a call for a structural fire or a vehicle accident, they're going to need everything that they have on the engine. The engine, fully staffed as it is, is really a fire station moving around. The fire station is really where the engine is housed at night. It's the, it's its home. But the fires, the responsibility for that district is wherever that engine is at all the times, inside of the district. And should that engine be out of district for a training or for another response, everything is constantly moving. It's like a web where we're looking at the closest available engine to respond to any type of call. If we have, we have specialized vehicles, like a truck company, like a heavy rescue, like a squad, that we're actually, right now, are going through the process of defining, if a dispatcher is looking at a screen now that shows where all the vehicles are, and they get a heart attack, or they get a fire, the vehicle that's closest may not be the appropriate vehicle. So we're keying the codes in the dispatch system so that the closest appropriate vehicle responds. But a fully staffed engine with three people, a medical kit, extrication equipment for auto accident, plus the ability to attack a fire, is kind of the industry standard. So that's, there are, there are cities, like the city of Los Angeles, that has, you know, has a four- or 5,000-member fire department, has a different variety of apparatus, and they also run their own ambulances. So that's part of this contract, that's part of this contract that we will be talking about as part of the larger contract, too, is the city, county of Santa Barbara going to fire ambulance response. But we're just not there yet. And legally, right now, we can't provide that type of service.
So the engine will have three personnel on it when it departs the station?
Yes, that's our standard. That's our minimum staffing, and that's our constant staffing. We work out of a three-person model.
Okay. In the budget, where is the fleet cost? I see on one of the slides, it's Fire Equipment Fund, $79,850. Is that just the maintenance and acquisition number?
Yeah, and that's the allocated, Ron? Part of, it's part of the allocated, and Ron, you can probably get to that quicker than I can.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez.
I think it's like slide 12.
In our allocated costs is where we pay for our vehicle replacement program. And this year, it went up about $50,000 in total.
Are you allocating the cost to all the city departments?
No, it's the allocated cost to us that we're paying to the fleet program.
So your expenditure is to Public Works?
Yes.
So is that $79,000 figure in slide 12?
I think I'll go back to the slides.
Yeah.
So it would be here.
So the $2.4 million is the number for this upcoming fiscal year?
Yes.
And on the budget worksheet on G158, where would that number be? Is that part of supplies and services?
Yes, it is.
So over the last couple of years, it's, you can't really tell if that number's gone up and down because there's other things in that category?
Yes.
Is that a traditional place to put fleet costs in, supplies and services?
Councilmember Dominguez, Madam Mayor, this is the categorization that we received from the Finance Department, and so that's what we run with here.
I'm sorry?
So that's what, that's how we present it. That's how it's presented.
Because it seems usually in bookkeeping, they have a separate vehicles line item.
There, in the detailed budget, there is a separate line item for vehicle replacements.
Okay. So what is the $79,850 on slide 12? That's non-vehicle equipment?
Is that this slide here we're talking?
No, one back, that's 13.
You read before that one. You're saying this one?
Slide 12.
You're on 13. There you go. Okay, yes. In the general fund, that is where all of our allocated costs are. Well, these costs.
So what is that $79,000 number?
Oh, $79,000? Okay, that is our, yes, that is our Fire Equipment Replacement Fund. That's a fund we set up a number of years ago, about three years ago. And that fund is to start saving money for large equipment purchases that are not provided for in the budget. For example, our SCBA equipment, we just replaced that a couple of years ago.
So is this non-vehicle?
Yes.
That's all I wanted to find out.
Oh, okay, yes. That's not a vehicle.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, one of the, one of the things that has happened with both the Vehicle Replacement Fund, which was something that started, I think, in 2002, and about three or four years ago, we started this Fire Equipment Fund. We had to pull a few hundred thousand dollars out of it for another need a few years ago. But before the Vehicle Replacement Fund existed, we would come to council as part of the Capital Improvement Plan every couple of years and ask for $300,000 or $400,000 for a fire truck. We just didn't think that that was an efficient way to do it. So what we're doing now is we're putting, we have a 15- or 16-year replacement cycle for each of the vehicles. And so that's part of the allocated costs that we're sharing the city. This Fire Equipment Fund is an attempt to do the same thing for things like our breathing bottles, our personal protective gear, and radios. And so it's a separate fund that we keep internally that mirrors the intent of the Vehicle Replacement Fund. The problem that we encountered, and I watched the presentation with Fleet, in the 15 years or so since we started the Fleet Replacement Fund, we had, there was an adjustment, there was an inflation figure of about, about 3%. And what we've discovered, as we neared the full life cycle of the vehicles that we'd started purchasing when the Fleet Replacement Fund was started, is it wasn't keeping track with the vehicle costs. So that's been adjusted up now to, I believe, 5%. So that's when we're, we are increasing our contribution to the fleet fund to try to keep up with that.
Okay. So then the number on G158, the capital equipment number, is that for vehicles?
G150?
158, just the department summary page. So for 2018, it's $50,000. Last year was $128,000.
No, that is, that's the capital equipment for the non-vehicle replacement. That is the, what we're replacing, what we're setting aside for radios, breathing bottles, et cetera. We decreased that because we increased our contribution to the vehicle fund.
So the $50,550 under capital equipment, that's coming out of the same fund as the Fire Equipment Fund of $79,850, which is non-vehicular equipment? Do you have the G158 in front of you?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Dominguez, Madam Mayor, so the question is, the $50,000 budgeted for fiscal '18, that is coming, that's our general fund equipment budget.
Right. And you told me that the $79,850 is your general fund equipment fund that you put money into to buy other equipment. So is that the same fund?
It is not. We have, this, the line on page 158 for capital equipment is the capital equipment that's specifically in our general fund.
But they both could be breathing equipment?
Typically, well, we haven't had to buy breathing equipment this, last year, because we had a full.
I'm just using that as an example, but I mean, it's like you have two accounts to buy the same type of equipment. I'm just trying to understand what your domain plate is.
Isn't one, you're actually buying the equipment, the other, you're saving into a fund to buy equipment later, more equipment later?
The capital, and excuse me for, excuse me for the confusion. I misspoke earlier. The Capital Equipment Fund is the, is the day-to-day replacement of shovels, of axes, chainsaws, et cetera, during the course of the year. The $79,000 is setting aside money for what will be hundreds of thousands of dollars purchases. So if we're looking for a half million dollars in radios, or a half million dollars in breathing equipment, we're looking at that as a long-term, for equipment that has, say, a 15-year life cycle, rather than the immediate day-to-day replacement due to breakage or age of more routine equipment.
So you're considering an axe, a fire axe, capital equipment?
Yes.
Again, because I just want to make sure these descriptors meet what laypeople think. So capital equipment in my mind is infrastructure. It's a building. It's not, and then you've got salary or supplies and services for $3 million. So what's, what are the big line items there? What are the supplies? I mean, is this office supplies or?
Councilman Dominguez, Mayor Schneider, there's office supplies in there, but that's really where our, the biggest cost there is our allocated costs. And we have about $600,000 devoted to the vehicle replacement program, about $250,000 devoted to vehicle maintenance a year in there.
And supplies and services?
That's where they're, that's where they're categorized on this table, yes.
That strikes me a little odd, but I'll make my notation here. The, so you mentioned in one of the slides, you're going to postpone the Public Education Coordinator position. Is that going to impact the Public Education P3s? Or are you going to have other personnel who are going to pitch in?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Dominguez, as you can see, we are, we dropped the number of a couple of things in anticipation that it might be challenging. We've since hired somebody that we think is going to move, move those back up, and that's primarily the Listos program. And so we'll think we'll be able to continue that. The Public Education Coordinator position has been gone since 2008. So we have managed through the use of, judicious use of volunteers and engine companies to continue all the public education we do. What we did have with Liliana Encinas was the Spanish-speaking program, Spanish-speaking CERT, but we have subsequently found somebody who's going to fill in that spot for us.
Thank you. The inspections, we had a question about that, and the costs, is that a full recovery cost, or is that just a small part of it? So like the apartment and hotels, it's a quarter hour and we're charging $28?
Councilman Dominguez, Mayor Schneider, yes, it's supposed to be based on full cost recovery. One of our goals in the coming year, we didn't highlight it here, but it is to take a hard look at our cost recovery program and our fee structure for our inspection fees.
So is that $28 doing it? What's the percent we're recovering there?
It should be doing it, and we have to look at that to make sure it does.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, if I could jump in here for a second. On the fee structure, that's based on CPI increases over the years of a fee study that we had done professionally, I believe in 2006. And the result of that fee study was how we structured, restructured the fees that we had at the time. Since then, they've gone up with the CPI only.
Okay. Is it time for another study?
It could be. Of course, that's another budget item.
That's another budget item, yeah. That's one of the things we're considering.
On G173, there are the time, P3s, and there's four of them, and we didn't meet any of those four. What are we doing to try to improve those? What are we doing to try to improve those?
One of the things, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, we found that we were, we were incorrectly measuring our response times. It was part of the work that we were doing, looking at our, at our whole dispatch system. This is a reflection of setting a higher standard for us, and so it is something where we, we were not, we were not meeting goals that we thought we were. So right now, it is for the immediate period, we, we adjusted, we created a stricter standard for ourselves. We expected that to be continually improving over this year and the next year.
So what specifically, so just to pick one, you have a turn outside time of less than 60 seconds 90% of the time, and you came in at 50%. So you said you've set the standard higher, not meaning you've changed the 90%, but you told your staff to.
We didn't know, we did, we did move the standard up, up higher, and we adapted an NFPA standard, which is the highest standard in, in the country. And so what we're trying to do is the time between when a, the dispatch, when the alarm is sounded in the station, till they're out the door. And, and we adopted a higher standard, and, and because of that, in the interest of transparency, we're reporting that we weren't meeting those. We expect to improve on all of those.
Okay. So what are you doing to improve?
We're, we are improving the way that the dispatches are received. We have an app that we put into a lot of the stations where they're getting a alert as soon as the dispatcher is, is getting it. So as soon as she starts, as soon as the dispatcher, as soon as the dispatcher starts keying in, the station is alerted, rather than waiting for the, the full dispatch to be completed. So for example, traditionally, we would get it, what's called a pre-alert. You would get three beeps, and then a, then a dispatch. We've eliminated that so that the dispatch comes out and says, "Medical emergency, 900 Olive Street." They start moving, and then the rest of the dispatch is given to them, the additional information en route.
Sounds great. Thank you very much.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To none of your surprise, I wanted to ask about the Wildland Plan, and my understanding is that that's, there's, we're near time to update that, and I would appreciate getting a little, I don't see anything here, so checking in on that.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, it's, we're always, of course, looking at the Wildland Fire Plan, which is our CWPP, our Community Wildfire Protection Plan. It is backed up by an EIR that, you know, so we have to stay within the, the parameters of what the EIR allows us to do. We are, we're always thinking about updating that. In the past couple of years, as you probably know, we employed DUDAC Agency to review our, the aspects of our Wildland Fire Plan that cover evacuation of the hazard, Wildland areas. They completed that study. We're looking at the results of the study, and, and as we go along, trying to examine different roadways and how we, city roadways, and how we can make them better. We also spent that, that year clearing all of the roads in the high fire, in the assessment district area, as opposed to our typical one-third of, of the roads, you know, doing it every three years. So with what money we have, we're, we're looking at, you know, always looking at improving things. But the Wildland Fire Plan, to reinvent it at, at this point, I don't think that, I don't think that needs to be done. I think that maybe updating is probably a good idea.
I agree. That it is now, 2004, so 13 years old. And the, we have a list of areas that were targeted as problem areas then, and that gets updated, but it's not cycling back to here. And as is, for example, the, you said there was an update, there's new work that's being done on.
Evacuation.
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 And that would be something that would be useful for council to hear. The engagement of not only council, but our citizens is where I'm hoping to trigger some, some, a little more activity. I think that the, the designation of the problem areas, and, and of course, the solutions that are, the efforts, which I know you do, and there's, the, this work here is, is very general, and I'm looking for a little more specifics so that our Wildland residents can see and participate in both, in the various stages, designating, and then, of course, in come the, the fire folks during the year to take on the prevention projects. I'm not seeing that, and I, I think it's, as you know, every activity that you do is a good thing. It has the spinoffs of the, of getting other, of getting folks to see, ah, the fire folks, I can do something too. And you do that with your inspections, you stimulate a lot of, a lot of activity.
I agree, and we do have a lot of interest with residents in the area. They always come out to greet the, the street clearing crews. We have a lot of interaction with folks, and I, I think, I agree with you, I think that, that, you know, it's kind of a from-the-ground-up type of thing, where, where the residents should always be a part of, of what we're doing up there, including any updates. And, and I think there's probably a way to do that, and a path forward with that. Again, you know, it's, we, we are always looking for funding for that type of thing, and we do have a grant outreach right now. So, you know, any, any money that we can bring into the district is, is also very helpful.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, in addition, I know that you, you're aware of the, we attended that meeting in the county. We continue, and Ann could probably address this in more detail, but we continue to meet with all the, both county and Montecito, the Forest Service, and the community organizations, Eucliptic Silla Riviera Association. And so we are, we are interacting with them, and we're, we're very aware of what the county, we're very conscious of trying to connect what Montecito's doing, what the city is doing, and what the county is doing together. So we get this patchwork across our high fire area. One of the problems that we have as a city is we're the, we're the downstream effect. We suffer as the downstream effect from state responsibility lands and federal responsibility lands. And, and so we are working with those partners, and I think closer than we ever have. The cooperation that's going on between, say, Robbie Hazard at the county, and the, the Wildland Specialist of Montecito, and Ann and Chris Braden, is probably at the highest level that we've had. And we're, we're very happy this year that we're able to get the contract work done with, with Cal Fire Con crews. And so that, that's going to be a much more robust presence out there.
Well, there's no doubt that both the, both fire, the safety, the safety staffs of the South Coast, both, both fire and law enforcement, have some of the strongest bonds and connections in, in your work, and thank goodness for that. What I'm angling for here is, first of all, the documentation to hear and to engage with you, and you engage with us and citizens, on what is that, we have this overall principle and set of standards and so forth, good things we're doing. What's our specific activity now? And we, when the plan came out 13 years ago, there was the, okay, the worst area, some of the worst areas are A, B, and C. They, some of them have been attacked and taken care of. Others are beasts that will just, you're just going to be, we're going to be fighting them all the way along. What are they? Where, I haven't seen as much as I'd like to see, of course, there never will be enough for me, but just on a regular basis, as you, as you prepare your year's work for both, both council, even Planning Commission, and whatever the homeowners associations that are involved in those, in those activities, that there be that cycle of information and activity. And so the, what is the, what is the today's list of high priority problem areas and our attack strategy on that? That would be kind of what I would figure to be part of a, of an updated Wildland Plan. It's not a new one. You say the EIR, we can't get outside of the lines in certain ways, but we certainly can go back and continue to flesh out what we have. I encourage you to, to make your best efforts to do that every year. And, you know, one of my fears is that there would be council members, that would be the first time that they're doing a Wildland visit is during an incident. And I just want it to be before an incident. I want us to have it be that, that all of us up here are tuned in to, to the problem and the activities that are going on to mitigate them. So that's, that's kind of the, behind my question a little bit, is, is that hope that this could continue? Because you, you do it regularly, but there's always, of course, more that can be done.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, to, to, to agree with your concerns, we had the BRAN school do their study of that program, and one of the things they recommended was better public communication and better public interaction. We are trying to work at that. We've looked, we, we took that study very seriously, and so your point is well-taken.
And, and you, Chief, have been really strong in the area of dragging, engaging with BRAN, this wonderful resource that's, and it's really flowering. I can tell you that we've also, at the, at COME, Consumer Operations and Maintenance Board, there's, there are efforts there as well to, to engage BRAN on the, on the Wildland issue as well. So thank you for your efforts.
I've had that discussion with BRAN about COME. I don't think they were aware of it at that point, yes.
Thank you for your work there.
Thank you. Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's been a long afternoon. I just, I don't, I didn't hear you say if it's going to be a bad fire season this year. We had some rain. I know the plants come and go, I'm not sure, but, I mean, that's the question I think the public wants to know. Are we expecting a bad wildfire season? And is that a fair question to you, sir?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, it is a, it is an every-year question, and, and we get kind of, we get made fun of because it's always a bad year. If it doesn't rain, it's a bad year. If it rains, it's a bad year. It's just a different type of, if it's a different type of problem. The, the effects of the drought are still there. The type of rain that we get this year, what it does is increases the grasses, which are the flashy lighter fuels, which probably will increase the number of starts. The, the, the rain has obviously helped, but we, Santa Barbara, the, the nature of our fires is, is, it's the, the wind is really the problem. The wind, with the fuels, and then it's the type of winds that we get. We have such a unique fire environment with the coastline that's running east to west. It's the only place in Western United States where the coastline does run east to west. So for our city, our mountains are in a southern exposure all day, all day long. And so you combine that with sundowner winds, the, the, the possibility of catastrophic fire is always here. If you, if you think back to the T Fire or the Hesizita Fires, those were pre-drought fires, and they were in November and May. So it's, it's, I don't know if that's, it's, if it's a fair answer, but I consider, I consider Santa Barbara a 12-month-a-year fire problem. There's just mitigating factors due to weather and that, and rainfall that change from, from year to year.
We just had such a bad run that period of time. You were there, you know what I'm talking about, so keep a good thought.
We had, and one, 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 one final note, if I can indulge, indulge you, if you'll indulge me. One of the things that we started over the last couple of years is a local type-three incident management team, which means, so instead of having to call the state or the feds to bring in an incident management team, we've established one locally, using all the fire agencies in the county. And over the past couple of years, because of the amount of fires, they've got, they got a tremendous amount of experience. During Hurricane Matthew last year, they reached out to California because they'd heard about this team working out of Santa Barbara, and wanted them to do hurricane work in advance of the, of Hurricane Matthew making landfall in the Carolinas. And they wanted to see if it's a smaller, mobile, faster, more economically feasible team could be used. Unfortunately, it coincided with red flag alert here, so we weren't able to send them. But we, we did raise some money over the past couple of months through the Firefighters Alliance and Fireball, and so we were able to get privately funded money to get a command trailer and vehicle that will now operate in Santa Barbara County, and you'll have people from every fire agency in the county working together, and that's local, state, federal, special districts. So it's, it's, like I said, it's indicative of the type of inter-agency cooperation that we're, we're doing right now. So we're going to get, our, our local response is incredibly robust, and I think it's really interesting, and I want to salute some local citizens who worked very hard to keep the Santa Maria Air Base open 12 months out of the year, which we didn't have during the Hesizita Fire. We had a meeting after the Sobranis Fire with the National Cost Team that came out, and we talked about the Los Padres National Force and the cost. Over 50% of the retardant dropped in the United States last year was flown out of Santa Maria Airport. So it's, that's kind of the year we had last year.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
Thank you very much. That's it.
Okay.
Only that.
Thank you.
Couple of questions.
Okay.
It's all good. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to police, Chief Zalino.
We are here, we being the command staff to present our fiscal year 2018 budget. Unfortunately, what you don't, or who you don't see is our business manager, due to unforeseen circumstances, has not been with us the last couple of weeks. So we learned very quickly that we work well together in crisis. It's been my first crisis in 10 months, that three of us sat for about four to six hours working hard to get this done. And I do want to thank very much Public Works Director Rebecca Bjork, who lent us their star, Brandon Bodett, who you recognize, who was actually able to access our information for us. And I really want to share that we would not be here today if it were not for our, our partners in the city helping out. So with that, we will be going over our department overview, our proposed budget, proposed fee changes, and then our key initiatives and performance objectives. Starting with our department overview, I want to point this out, I've been here, like I said, 10 months. This is the second time we've changed our org chart, which means the budget documents that you have before you, as they relate to specific programs, don't really mesh in regards to personnel. We have 211 full-time budgeted positions for staff. 142 of those are sworn, and that is one less than we had last year because we did not choose to backfill the deputy chief position. And what we did with that position is we created our civilian public engagement manager. And then with this year's budget, we did cut an IT tech position, so that's why our overall staff has remained at 211. So each of our captains oversee different operational areas, different divisions, and the biggest change to our new org chart is that of having a neighborhood policing unit. And we did this change to affect better, long-term problem-solving. I found that a lot of our resources had been in different areas and siloed, and that it came down to difficulties around communication and, and duplicating efforts, that I felt that this model is going to give us what we've needed all along, and that's the in-depth analysis and ability to tackle on citywide problems. analysis and ability to tackle on citywide problems very systematically and very collaboratively with the, all stakeholders. So this model went into effect on Saturday. And Lieutenant Dan McGrew has been put in charge to make sure that this is successful for us. To back up a little and discuss where we are on staffing, because I know that's always on everybody's mind when we are here. We had two recent retirements over this last, or over the last two weeks. So we have 139 of our 142 sworn positions filled. We have three recruits who are four weeks into their 26-week police academy. And in addition, we have 12 officers in their final stages of training, which if all goes well, will have 12 new boots on the ground in the next three months. It would be actually 24 boots, but 12 people. But what's really exciting is that we have five strong academy graduates and laterals that are in our background process. And our last open recruitment produced us 80 individuals that we will be interviewing in June. So I'm here to say that I view where we are with our hiring and staffing is where we should be in a management mode. We are an organic organization that continually is going to be seeing people come and go due to retirements and, and different transitions. But we are not in crisis as we were a year ago. And what we were able to do in fiscal year 17 so far with our recent additions is we added two more beat coordinator positions. We added our full-time school resource officer position, which was the first time since about 2014. And I'm very excited to say on Saturday, we added a second officer to restorative policing and one more motor officer. So our future allocations as, as our officers come out of training are definitely going to be filling up our special enforcement team, which will include our nightlife component. And they're within that model of the neighborhood policing unit to again be used to tackle very complex problems as a mass resource along with all of our other officers. All right. Moving on, and this is how we have our percentage of staff broken up, 49% in field operations and 16% with our community and support services division, which highlights our new team. So those 34 people are, majority of which are officers that are going to be uniformed when we need them, or uniform most of the time, depending on the mission. And because we did away with that deputy chief position, the chief staff includes the business office, our professional standards unit, and our new public engagement manager that report directly to me. I don't have 11 staff members. I just wanted everybody to know that. And then obviously, our internal and investigative operations has the remaining 30% of our staff. So as I set up, officers typically are drawn to law enforcement because they don't like numbers and math. But we are glad to have Captain Stony here, who has a minor in math, who's going to take on our, our budget presentation.
Hopefully, I have more than offered than that. But Madam Mayor, council members, we'll start with our summary, summary of revenues for our fiscal year 2018. As you see, we're working through a $42.6 million budget. We have three main funding sources, the first being our general fund subsidy, which accounts for 36.8 or 87% of our general fund subsidy. Second, we have the general fund department revenue, which accounts for 5.2 million or 12%. The main sources of that funding are our parking violations and the half-cent sales tax, county sales tax. And then our final slice, which comes as only 1%, and approximately half a million dollar is our grants, our asset forfeitures and some of our community, it's a community-oriented policing services grant from the DOJ that we have. So that accounts for the, our pie sliced out there. In preparing this year's budget, we were looking at our finance projections on some of our revenues. We are looking at a $170,000 reduction in our taxes, fees, and fines. First and foremost, our half-cent county sales tax for the last three years has been trending downward, so there is a slight decline there. Our taxi permits are down. We account that to the increase in Uber and Lyft being used in the city. Our municipal court fines are down. And finally, our parking citation revenue is lower than it's been in the previous years. We also have seen a reduction, or we, we have a finance projection of reduction of $100,000 in our service charges. First and foremost, post the police officer standardized training, the state training reimbursement, they announced this year that they were going to cut some of their reimbursements to the cities. So we will only be looking at room and board versus additional reimbursements there. Our dismissal fees include mainly are a function of our traffic fix-it tickets. And finally, our vehicle release fees from our impounded vehicles are also down. So that accounts for another $100,000 reduction that we are anticipating in our service charge So looking at the general fund estimated revenues, again, that's $5.6 million. The biggest slice of the pie are parking violations, 48%, accounting for $2.7 million. Our fees and fines up at the top there, 14%. And what that is generally made up of are our taxi cab and dance permits, our municipal court fines, and our animal licensing fees. The half-cent county sales tax accounts for 5% of our, the revenues. Our service charges, 16%. What falls underneath our service charges are our copy fees, our post-reimburchments, our accident report copy fees is where some of our court dismissal fees, excuse me, our ticket dismissal fees. We work with the public schools for 1% in our crossing guard. That's a revenue that comes in to staff our school cross zones during the school year. Internal charges at 7%. What those are, our traffic safety fund, as well as a street sweeping transfer money. And finally, our other revenues account for 9%. And you'll find that in our property forfeitures, our JPA reimbursements. Looking at the numbers more closely that you just saw on our last pie chart, I want to address two numbers in particular. The service charges, I just spoke how they were going down, but you will see an increase in our, of $162,000 in that line item. We moved this year our special event fees into our service charges. We felt that was a better way to document that. So even though we have seen some reductions, we moved from other revenue, out of other revenues into service charges. So you'll see a high, you'll see an increase in service charge numbers despite the fact that you spoke to about decreases, but you'll see a dramatic decrease down at the bottom line under other revenues of the $864,000 because we moved money out of that into service Now moving to our expenditures. Our largest percentage, our largest expenditure is our salary and benefits, which account for 87% of our overall expenditures. This is definitely in line with the industry standard. We then look at our supplies and services at 13%. Our special projects, which is a small number, accounts for 0%, but it's, it's definitely worth mentioning because it's our gun buyback program, our animal control funding, and some of our canine profits, as well as our non-capital equipment, which again is a small percentage. And that, that mainly is our computer hardware. Again, looking at the pie chart number format, again, you'll see where we came up with our, our total expenditures with the salary and benefits being the largest. In terms of supplies and services, the big decrease this year came from our liability insurance. It went down dramatically, which is always something that we're happy. If you look at our capital equipment, why we had 210 last year and zero expenditures this year, that was the biometric AR-15 that we installed at the, or basically gun storage locker that we started at the department, as well as some computer hardware that we purchased for our computer dashboarding and our internal affair investigation. So we're excited about those, but there's no, no, no planned expenditures in that category next year, as well as our transfers out. That was a one-time $200,000 purchase to replace all our tasers. In terms of proposed fee changes, we don't have any scheduled for the following year, but I did want to comment that by resolution, in the last several months, we've added the large vehicle ordinance to our parking tickets, as well as we've increased our animal licensing fees. So through resolution, we have added some fees during the, the recent times.
Moving on to our key initiatives. Just to give you a little background and where we are, in December of 2014, there was a presidential executive order to develop a 21st century policing task force to identify the best practices to gain community trust and support. And from that report came these six pillars that we are using to move on as we develop our objectives. So they're now organized in these areas. Our overall goal is to reduce crime always in the fear of crime in our community. And as we move through that, our, our, I'm sorry, our objectives are reflective of the pillars in the way that you will see as Captain Marazita will present. But in regards to building trust and legitimacy, we, we as police officers can't be seen as occupying force any longer if we expect to gain the trust. So that's why that's vital. As well as policy and oversight, our policies we know have to reflect our community values. So we are going to be incorporating them into our future policy assessment. And then technology, social media these days allows us to fully engage and educate our community in dialogue. And obviously, community policing is always our guiding philosophy. It allows us to identify our problems and collaborate on solutions with all stakeholders. And then training and education, our job is one of the toughest out there, and it's always changing and expanding as certain social solutions may not be present due to funding. We adopt those just by the job that we do. So we need to continually train our officers and ensure that our training is effective for the job we're doing. And then also officer safety and wellness, it's not only critical for our officers and our colleagues and their agencies, it's also critical for public safety. So I will pass this on to Captain Marazita to go through our initiatives.
Thank you, Chief. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council. Captain Bill Marazita from the Investigative Division of the Police Department. And I'm going to be going through each of those pillars that the chief mentioned and talking about how our P3 objectives support those pillars and any other things that we're doing within the police department program-wise that also support those pillars. I think I have 206 slides, give or take 200. So I'll try to get through as quickly as I can, but I do have a lot of slides. So on the first, the first pillar, building trust and legitimacy, as the chief mentioned, we really can't do our job without having the public's trust. And that all starts with answering our calls for our 911 calls in a quick manner. One of our P3 objectives is to answer all 911 calls within five seconds. And our average right now is 4.15 seconds. And just to give you kind of a idea, our statewide guideline for this, this measure is to answer 911 calls within 15 seconds. So we're substantially under that number in our dispatchers, in our, in our comm center just do, do such a great job with that. The second thing would be responding to priority one calls within seven minutes. That's in our field operations P3 section. And those priority one calls would be emergency calls that threaten life or serious bodily injury. And we're currently averaging 5.9 minutes with that, with that measure. How quickly we arrive builds trust with the community, as does answering those 911 calls quickly. And the next thing is our citizens academies in our community and media relations program. That again increases our transparency and trust. It helps build relationships. We have a P3 goal of doing at least two citizens academies each year. We just completed a, one of our citizens academies in English, and we're scheduled to start our second one of this fiscal year at the end of June, and that will be a Spanish-speaking citizens academy. Then the last point is actually four different programs that aren't currently in any of our P3 programs, but I think they were really important to highlight, and that's community conversations, voices, our affinity card program, and aligning perceptions. So I did want to just take a little bit of time and go through those with some detail. The community conversations program is an effort to facilitate community meetings with some religious congregations and groups like that, and build relationships and establish communication with some of the more difficult, about some of the more difficult topics that, that we have in police work, things like use of force and immigration policies, et cetera. So we've had two of those community meetings already, and we are planning more of those in the future. They're facilitated discussions between our officers and the community groups, and we really get a lot out of them. The second one is our voices program. And this is a workshop that our brand-new police officer trainees go through when they graduate from the police academy. They travel to local partnering organizations. These organizations are generally the organizations who, that under, that serve people who are often underrepresented in our communities. So the partnerships we've created there are with Just Communities, Pacific Pride, Y Strive, Los Prados Boys Camp. And it's just a, another mechanism to increase communication between our brand-new officers and the community and get community dialogue going. And we will kind of toot our horn a little bit that this program has been picked up by the International Association of Chiefs of Police. They have a lot of interest in it. And our very own Sergeant Hill, along with Chief Luno, will be traveling out of, out of state, I believe, to present that.
Yes, I just want to toot our horn. We were selected to present our program as a part of a workshop for the International Association Chiefs of Police Conference. It has over 10,000 chiefs of police from all over the world and, and associates. But we are presenting it as a part of the community and leadership track. So we're looking for grants, which look very positive, to bring our community partners with us to present it in its full form, so we can really highlight what we do here, which is unique and getting a lot of attention.
And moving on to our affinity card program, which I know we've briefed you on before, but maybe for the sake of the public, just to kind of advertise this program a little bit. It's a tool for our officers to kind of show their, their human side of themselves, if you will. It, you know, takes down the barriers of the uniform, and it provides them with an opportunity to make a video of themselves in a, in a park or in a school or something and talk about their own personal life and the challenges that they've had, and their interests and hobbies. And again, trying to just humanize our, our officers more. And I really want to thank our local, our city TV. They deserve a lot of credit. They've been helping us quite a bit with putting together the videos. And all those videos are on the internet, and those affinity cards point, point the public to those videos on the internet. And again, this program has been looked at by our Bureau of Justice Assistance, which is an arm of the Federal Department of Justice. And it's being advertised on their website now as sort of a model for community engagement. So we're real happy about that as well. And then the last project up there is our aligning perceptions. We've done one of these already, and it's a partnership with Santa Barbara City College. And it's a way for our officers to, to be placed in a city college class along with students, and they participate together with the students, sort of as students in a critical, in critical thinking exercises with the students. And the goal again there is to break down barriers and reduce bias for both the police officers and the, and the students. So it's been very successful, and we're just getting the, the second one online right now. So I'll move on to policy and oversight. You know, the, the police department obviously needs clear and concise policies for our employees and for the public. And we need proper checks and balances to make sure those, those policies are in place and that we have proper oversight. One of the things that we have in our P3 program for fiscal year 18 is to develop a chief's advisory board. And this is going to be sort of an informal sounding board of community members who report directly to the chief. It'll be a diverse group of people to, to reach out to them, to help us, give them a voice in helping us with policy. decisions and ways, ways that we can improve and serve the public better. The next point up there is our Internal Affairs Tracking Software, another P3 objective that we will have in place by the end of fiscal year 18. We have the software actually already purchased. This is a police integrity software that really will be used by our professional standards unit to manage, manage investigations. It'll help us identify where training may be appropriate. And we think we'll probably have that online here in the next couple of months, by the beginning of the fiscal year, actually, and get it really up and running by the end of fiscal year to get some good data in there. We also do quarterly audits of our evidence room for guns, drugs, and money, to make sure those, those vital pieces of evidence and property are always accounted for. And then we also have a P3 goal of investigating any complaints from the public that come in within 120 days. We think that's a good public service to get them, their response back, but also a good internal service to our officers to get those, those complaints completed in a timely manner. And the last thing under policy and oversight would be our policy manual update. We're currently in the process of a complete audit and update of our entire policy manual. And one of the things through our chief's advisory board and other meetings, we'll be seeking input from other sections of the community on what things that we could put in there or address in our policy that are reasonable. Things like use of force, or the need to add in de-escalation language to our use of force and provide office, our officers with that type of training. So that's all in the forefront, and it will be coming here in the next, in the next fiscal year. Moving on to technology and social media, it's really important for police departments to keep up in these two realms, to really be effective in 21st century policing. Social media, as we know, is the quickest way to get out information and to accurately promote our brand. Technology quickly changes, and it's always a, a challenge to keep up with it. So we do have quite a few of our P3 goals that make sure we do that. One of the, one of the big pieces of, of software that we are really looking forward to is our Crime View Dashboard Software. We've spoken about this a couple of times, I know, but it's basically an enhancement, the next step forward in our, in our CompStat model. CompStat's very good at giving us crime trends over periods of time. This will be very good at giving us real-time information. It integrates perfectly with our Versadex Records Management System. So we will be able to plot crime maps for officers in briefing for crimes that have occurred within the last 24 hours, 48 hours. So it'll really give them a proactive approach to go out when they, when they start their shifts. Our timeline to get that online is about two months to get it into our briefing rooms to start using it. And then we'll be enhancing it more as we go along with different capabilities that it has. Another P3 goal we have is cloud-based storage for our mobile audio/video evidence. This will greatly enhance the district attorney's requirement, or the court's requirement for discovery. We right now make copies of all that, all that evidence and send it to the district attorney's office. This will allow us, or allow them to download that information securely from the, from the cloud. The next item up there is proximity dispatching implementation. And Chief McElroy mentioned this a little bit. Right now, our dispatchers mainly use, well, as you know, our dispatch center is a combined communications center. It dispatches both police and fire. And mainly on fire calls, they will dispatch the closest, whatever the closest firehouse is to calls. And this proximity dispatching will integrate with their audio, their vehicle locating system on their vehicles that they have now. So if they're out of their firehouse at a park or something, then our dispatchers will be, will be signaled that that's the closest apparatus to send. So that's, that will be a big enhancement for, for the fire department. Our public engagement manager position, this is getting into the sort of the social media side of things. Part of his job, Anthony's job, he's in the back of the room here, is, is social media and outreach to the public. And I'm sure you've probably seen in the last couple of months that we've had a greatly increased presence on both Facebook and Twitter, and also Instagram. And what I understand from talking to Anthony yesterday is Chief Luno actually has her own Twitter account now, so I think we're going to start seeing tweets. Getting into the community policing, the restorative policing program, as the chief mentioned, we have, as of this last weekend, placed another officer in there, Officer Kent McBride. And he is proudly standing there on the bottom right in that photograph. So we do have two officers in our restorative policing program. Our transient camp cleanups with our bike team, we have a goal of doing 16 of those during this fiscal year. We've already outpaced that at doing 20 through the end of quarter three, and we'll probably end up doing by, about 25 by the end of fiscal year 17. Again, community meetings, we regularly attend downtown Santa Barbara meetings, the PATH Neighborhood Partnership meetings, and a variety of other meetings, as you know. Community policing report is a new endeavor that we're going to be exploring here and implementing. It's going to be a report that we're going to be putting together periodically for council and for the public on all of our community policing efforts that are, that are going on. And a lot of the stuff from our neighborhood policing unit will be coming into that report. The PAL and Explorer Programs, which I know you're all very familiar with, we have 900, about 900 youth involved in our PAL program now, and 22 explorers. The SNAP program, which began about six weeks ago, around April 1st, we have three SNAP officers on board now. They've, in the last six weeks, where they've, they've responded to 85 calls for service, and only four of those resulted in a, in a citation from the, from the Police Department. So, so far, the program's working pretty well. They also wrote 91 parking citations in, in, in the neighborhoods as they were responding to calls. And then the chief mentioned our neighborhood policing unit. The Lieutenant Dan McGrew would be in charge of that. And as she said, it's going to be a, it's going to be a great program. It's a single point of communication and coordination of our proactive units in the, in the Police Department. So our beat coordinators, our bike team, our special enforcement team, our restorative policing volunteers in SNAP will all be under that. They sort of have some overlapping responsibilities, but Lieutenant Dan McGrew will be the one point of contact and organizer for, for making sure that they're deployed properly and doing everything we need them to do. Getting into training and education, we have a P3 objective of meeting all of our post-mandated training, which is biannual for perishable skills. We do quarterly shooting qualifications for our officers every three months, every quarter. And we've also recently purchased a force, force options simulator. This is a portable unit that we're excited to get. It is a, it's a computer-generated, I guess, a screen where an officer can stand in front of it with an operator behind them. And depending on what is in the video and how the officer responds, the person who is coordinating it behind the operator can change how the video responds. So if, if the officer is faced with a use of force situation, the, the, the operator can change how that video continues along, depending on how the officer responds. So if the officer is, is de-escalating the situation well, then they can change that to an appropriate response. And if they're not doing it properly, they can change it to a different response. It'll be a very good training aid for officers. But we're also hoping that it'll be good for community interaction and awareness for the public. We'll be able to use this at citizens academies and have the public go through it if they'd like. Implicit bias and procedural justice training, we've just completed some training for all of our supervisors on that, and also recently sent two officers to become instructors to bring this back to our, the rest of our department, to give implicit bias and procedural justice training. We have worked and been working with Just Communities. They received a $10,000 grant to also go out to the public and help train the public on their implicit bias. You know, everybody has them. We have them. The public does. So it's again, a group, community effort. And then the last thing on there is the training committee. We've developed five committees within the Police Department. So the training committee is one of five of these internal committees. It's made up of our employees. And the committee is looking at any other sort of training needs that we have, other than the mandated post-training and quarterly shooting training, any other training needs that we have as a department. So it's a kind of a grassroots officer-level effort to come up with some of those. The last section is on officer safety and wellness. And this is kind of a broad category. I mean, one of our objectives is to maintain full staffing levels at 95% or higher. This obviously increases our employee safety and officer safety when we have more robust staffing. It allows for more proactive work, and it also requires the officers to work less overtime and gives them more time off with their families when we're at high staffing levels. Our chaplain program, obviously, we use them a lot in critical incidents for the public, but maybe council doesn't know that the chaplains also spend a lot of time with our employees to help them through personal matters. A new program, an At Ease Program, is a program that Mike, Sergeant Mike McGrew got online right before he retired. And it's another program to assist employees with confidential and individualized counseling service, another program that's available to our employees. The Police Foundation has been great in providing resources and financial support for injured or ill employees over the years. And then again, we have two more committees, a wellness and a safety committee that are both addressing, those are both two internal committees that are both addressing further wellness and safety issues. And I kind of want to end our presentation, because I think my last 200 slides got edited out. I think Mr. Casey heard I was doing this part of the presentation and took them out, so. The, I wanted to end our presentation on a high note. Our employee injuries have really declined in FY17. We just had a, our workers' comp review with city risk management. We've had a drastic increase in two things, both the number of employee injuries and the severity of those injuries.
Decreased.
No, 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 it's increased. Excuse me, excuse me, yes. Drastic decrease in both the number of employee injuries and the severity of those injuries. So for example, in FY16 total, we had 62 injuries. And for FY17, we're projecting to be around 40% of that, around 38 or 40 injuries. And, and again, the severity of those injuries is a lot less. We're getting people back to work quicker, and there's a lot less lost time due to these injuries. We looked at, kind of brainstormed, what would, what were the reasons for this? You know, because we want to keep doing it. And, you know, it's, it's kind of hard to put our finger on it. We're working with risk management to, to maybe get a better, a little better understanding about it. I'm sure it's not just one reason. I hate to think it's just randomness and, and luck. But as our staffing levels come up, I think officer safety increases, injuries go down. You know, we have great sergeants and lieutenants in the field that make sure people are working safe. We're maintaining a commitment to training our employees and safety for our employees. And then I, I got to also give a shout out to Mr. Casey and the council for hiring a excellent chief a year ago, who really has provided a lot of inclusion for our employees, internal procedural justice, and a real clear vision for our employees. But I know the chief will be the first to say this, and she's absolutely right. It's really our employees that have the, the strongest role in this. I can tell you that they're the key. The, the sense of job satisfaction and morale that I see around the department now has, has not been there in, well, I'll just say in a long time. And I know from talking with risk management that there's a very high correlation between the number and severity of injuries versus job satisfaction and morale. And that is that the number of, and severity of injuries will drop as job satisfaction and morale rises. So I think personally that that's, that's the biggest contributor here. And I'm going to leave it on that, because they say leave, leave on a high note, so.
Oops. Thank you. We do have some speakers who'd like to contribute their thoughts, a couple of our commissioners also included. Why don't we start with Janine Daniels? Come on up, then Jaclyninda, and then Missy Zeisakoff. And thank you for your patience. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Council members. My name is Janine Daniel, and I'm here with two hats on this afternoon. My first hat is for the last two years, I've served on the Fire and Police Commission, and I am the liaison between the Fire Department and the Commission. And I'm here mostly with this hat to share with you the fact that I recently had the opportunity to participate in the Police Department's ride-along program on April 20th with Sergeant Charlie, and I hope I pronounced his last name correctly, Kat Sappas?
Yes.
Yes. It had a profound impact on me as a member of the community, as an educator, and also as a mother. I included for you a copy of the email that I sent to him and also to Rose Cabillo, the chief's assistant. I thought it would be important for you to see what occurred during my ride-along. But one of the things that impressed me the most from this experience, besides putting myself into the perspective of what it's like to be in a, to be a police officer, is the relationship demonstrated between the fire and the Police Department. They work hand in hand. We're really blessed with two departments that are totally supportive of each other and don't draw a line where they think their jobs finish. They're there to meet the same objective for each other. And I think this is quite unique. It's almost like a family. And one other aspect was the enlightenment that I had about restorative policing. And I'm very pleased that we now have two officers, but I think this is looking towards the future to resolve a lot of issues that we, as a community, face, especially with our homeless and our transients. As a follow-up to that, on May 11th, last Thursday, I had the opportunity to observe for three hours at the dispatch center. And this is something that's come up many times during this budget presentation. I met with the new Communications Manager, Cindy Freeman, who comes to us with an amazing background and experience in dispatching from Riverside. And I'm bringing this up particularly because the people who in this department are really unique, dedicated, unsung heroes that should be given more recognition and merit for what they do to contribute to our community and to our well-being. These are the people who send out our first responders, and it would be very positive, I think, to put a face with a voice. They, they do really amazing work. And I highly recommend that all of you, if you have not done the ride-along program, or whether you have or not in the last few years, it would be really wonderful for you to sign up and do it once again, because I think occasionally to participate in seeing how things have changed, and especially now under the helm of our new police chief, with philosophy that she's promoting about making things more, you know, the human side. Now, I'm switching to my other hat.
Well, you've been at three and a half minutes already, so if you could wind up, that would be great. Thanks.
The last thing is, I'm here with my hat as a mayor, as a member of the Riviera Association, and someone who's had to evacuate three times because of fires. There is a line item in the Fire Department budget that has been eliminated for many years. And Chief McElroy referred to Lilian and Thienas as being lost to the city of Galida. We've definitely lost a big asset, because there are not funds to pay for a public educator. And this job focuses for the underserviced community members. And so if you do have a chance to reevaluate that line item for the future, I think it would be in everyone's best interest. And then wrapping it up, sorry to take so much time. But I'd like to say something in Spanish, because of our Spanish community. because of our Spanish community. Ya es hora para mirar hacia el futuro y buscar soluciones para educar todo el público, which translated means, "It's time to look towards the future and to look for solutions to educate all of our public." Thank you.
Thank you. Jaclyn?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I'm here with two hats as well. One is the Coalition Against Gun Violence. As you know, for the last few years, the Coalition has worked hard to do those gun buybacks that we're about to launch off again. We're not only looking at June 10th for this year, but we're also looking at the next fiscal year for November, which gets it close to the holidays for a lot of folks. And so it is important to do the kind of work that we need to partner with our Police Department. And in this budget, and what I hear in these presentations is community policing and getting folks together. What that basically underlines to me is how much is that actually costing and how much we can invest in even more so with our Police Department? Because every minute that an officer is doing these educational things, is going out and doing outreach, there's less money for them to be out in the street and less time for them to be doing what they need to with regard to response. So I come to you with also the hat of the community, and that is a Latino community that I represent. And in these times where the Latino community feels even more so scared because of our national policies and immigration, we need to involve our Police Departments locally in more grassroots outreach, more innovative ways of participation. So what that basically translates to, again, is supporting our Police Department in their budget in the fullest capacity to do restorative policing, to look outside the box and make sure that we have the funding to be able to do so adequately, because it is stringent upon our community to only have one or two officers assigned to restorative policing full-time. And we do need that kind of support locally, especially with times changing in the next four to eight years. So to wrap up, I know that we're looking at time here. I support the Police Department budget. I wish that we had more money to be able to do more community policing, because we need it, and definitely would like to continue to engage with the city and our Police Department to look forward to more gun buybacks, because I believe that's the safest way and more appropriate way to deal with issues like that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Missy Zaitsov?
Okay, this was written very quickly at Carpenteria High School, sixth period. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Council, and esteemed others. I'm Missy Zaitsov, one of the commissioners of the Fire and Police Commission, as she says, maybe we should change it to Police and Fire once in a while. On April 25th, the Commission voted to recommend to Council and Mayor our approval of the Police and Fire budgets proposed for next year, fiscal year 18. After a very detailed review of both budgets, which were presented by our two chiefs, we decided that both appear to be fiscally conservative, sensible, and both address all needed areas of public safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so it's to the council. It's an issue that's come up, and I know, Chief, when you first started, I brought it up, but it comes and goes. And I noticed there wasn't any fee changes in the presentation. The issue's related to when recreation vehicles get towed, and because the person who owns it doesn't have any other money, the fees, the daily fees with the tow company just sort of compounds and gets bigger and bigger to the point where the fee is worth more than the vehicle itself and creates this spiraling system. And I know when you first started, we briefly, I think, had a conversation about it. But I'm not, and if I remember correctly, not every fee associated with the tow company is in our control, but some are and some are not. And I don't know if that is something else now, especially they have restorative policing still in full gear. We're looking at other alternatives for people living in their vehicles and trying to help them when we can, if now's a good time to start looking at that again and seeing if there's alternatives. I don't believe it gives us a lot of revenue in the city, but for those who have to incur those fees, it's a very significant fee for those individuals. So I don't know if that's come up in your conversations during the budget proceeding, or if that's something we should do, you know, look at in the next few months, but I just thought now would be a good time to bring it up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It has not come up, but I think we are now aligned with our resources to best address all facets of issues like that collaboratively, because it will take others to step up and help provide resources. So thank you for mentioning that, and we will take that forward as we proceed.
Great, thank you. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, I can go back to your org chart just for a moment, because I thought I heard you, I've been thinking about the B coordinators and the different kinds of forces we had out there and the labels we had, and I thought I heard you say nightlife, and I wasn't sure that you did, and I didn't see it on the chart.
Yes.
Wasn't sure if that was planned to be reestablished. I know there's a lot of folks that are asking about that whole situation.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, so what we've done is we've embedded nightlife enforcement under the special enforcement team, which is basically, at fully staffed, is going to be seven officers and a sergeant that is basically going to be there for major impact, whatever the issue is. Within that, there's going to be that nightlife expertise and specific officers to address the specific issues as they relate. So with our next staffing allocation with our trained individuals, we're expecting to get that team better staffed so that we will have a presence that's noticed. The good news is, is one of our lateral hires is a former ABC enforcement officer, and then our very own public engagement manager is also that alcohol policy expert and has conducted many of the responsible hospitality courses that help benefit an entertainment area.
Great, yeah, because I know as we go forward, discussions about, you know, different kinds of behaviors on State Street and whatnot, it'll be having the conversation or having the labels that we all can converse with, it'd be great. And then my second question was about the types of patrols that will be in the neighborhood patrols versus just black and whites. Are we talking some bike patrols, foot patrols, other ways that, you know, of seeing the officers in and out and about on their feet and or on their bikes?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, I will say they will be doing whatever it takes to solve a problem. So if we need to have them up in trees, they're going to be up in trees undercover. If they need to be, yes, undercover, on bikes, we know presence is important, and we will have a lot more latitude to get the presence well-spread. So if there is individual missions within the scope of each of the units, you know, we can share that responsibility for showing a presence where we want to, for example, on State Street, and make sure we're doing it all.
And will the B coordinators have that determination, who will be the ones that'll say, "We're going to go bikes, or we're going to go feet, or we're going to go black and whites today"? Is that just, are just going to evolve as the...
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, our lieutenant is going to be directing the resources towards the problems at hand to ensure that they're proper and efficient. So the sergeants are going to be running their teams with very clearly defined missions, as I imagine, but at the root of it is that very analytical, systematic approach to problems. So our B coordinators have, in the past, had that responsibility for longer-term problem-solving. It's going to be that team environment that they're communicating daily, weekly, on what they've seen, what they've experienced, and then setting the strategy together so they know they're working as comprehensively as possible. I hope that answers it.
No, it isn't. I just, I know it's a work in progress, and especially as the staff infills, so excited to see these new folks coming out. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dominguez?
Just 206 questions.
I have to leave.
I'm curious about the special events budget item on G309. It's, the expenditures is going down quite a bit, so I want to see what the expectation is or the reasoning behind that. In the projected 2017, it's 836,000, and it drops down to 662.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, can we get back to you with that question?
Absolutely.
We did adjust some fees to go other places, and our experience and expertise in this matter is not where it should be, so we're going to require a little more research.
And the reason I'm curious about this in particular is because, as you heard me ask, the Fire Department and other departments, I'm looking at how much of a percentage of full recovery, and I know particularly with public safety, the goal isn't full recovery, but it's good just to chart it over time, what we're recovering from special events. Is it, are we losing, you know, half a million, a million? So if there's anything you can bring back in that regard, that would be great. The, let's see, 321, same question I asked Fire, is your P1 call service is great, you're a full second below, but the other three aren't with meeting your goals? So that's the P2, P3s, and P4 routine times. And I'm assuming part of it's staffing levels, but is there other explanations, or are there things you can try to do to increase those times, or I guess decrease the times to meet the standards?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, you're exactly right. Staffing has had an impact, and as a priority, we're going to handle emergency calls no matter what. So some of the things we're going to bring in, volunteers. One thing I discovered also is we don't have our online reporting in Spanish. We need to beef up our ability to educate people on our online reporting for those lower priority calls that are included there. If it's more of a convenience for them to fill out a report online, it's definitely more efficient for us to do that and help them get the services they need in the long run. So those are a couple of the things, but as we get, like I said, better staffed, we're going to have the ability. And then this new team too, I believe, is going to reduce our duplicative efforts and create some efficiencies that are going to enable our patrol officers to be more responsive to those radio calls, because they're not going to be dealing with the ongoing issues on a daily basis, the repeated ones that drive them into certain areas.
And I think you're going to be successful, because you're going to be faster, but also crime and calls for service will decrease, so there will be less to race around to. So on the next page, G32, municipal code citations written. So that was 4,816, and then projected this year is 2,800, and then proposed for next year is 4,300. So it's up, down, and then back up. What is, I'm curious about that. Can you tell me anything about that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, it's a staffing issue, for sure. Those fines specifically come from the tickets written out in the field by our officers, and we haven't had those.
Okay. The advisory board that was mentioned, that sounds very intriguing and like it would have a lot of success. What's going to be the makeup?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, we've just completed the application process, and we are going to put it out and make sure we have a great cross-section. We definitely want to engage people that necessarily aren't supporters, as we've labeled them, that we want to work with, people that are critical of what we do and that have the time to commit to really looking at our operations transparently and wanting to work towards a solution together. So we don't have a makeup of what the board's going to look like, per se, yet. We're actively reaching out to people to see who is interested, and we're thinking that, do we say 30 people? Knowing that people won't be able to make it might give us a good core group to work with as we go through the process. So we are, we don't have the applications out. We've pre-identified a group of people, and we will be widening the net, if you will, and getting that application out there and kind of determine as we see what we have and see if we need to do some specific outreach to if we don't think we have representation.
Great. I like that focus on getting the full cross-section. The, it sounds like you've been doing an operational study internally, the way you've been finessing the org chart and reallocating personnel. When I worked with different law enforcement agencies, a lot of them used an external operational study, a consultant to come in and look at things. So that might be something that you consider. You could do it now, you know, I don't think the department's done one in a long time, if ever, or you could wait until some of the processes you've set up have taken root. So that's just an idea I'm throwing out there. And then finally, the State Street patrolling, the extra patrols that are operating. We've had great feedback from the community. State Street looks safer and cleaner than ever. Anything you want to add about the State Street patrols, particularly for what we're looking at for fiscal year 18?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, it's clear that presence makes a difference. We've had a lot of positive feedback from just our basic interaction. People are so happy, and I think the best part of it is it's really helped our officers feel appreciated for what they do on a daily basis. But as we get staffed, like I said, 12 additional people with this next group is going to make a difference so that we have the ability, again, as we, I think, work this through and solve chronic problems and free up more time, you'll see a lot more of us down there. We're working with an office space to get a presence down there in one of the vacant businesses, so that our officers will stay closer as well, so they have a restroom to use and a place to write reports. So that will reinforce that presence as well.
Sounds great. Thank you all.
Thank you. I appreciate you modeling your presentation with the 21st Century Policing Report. I know, because other cities are doing the same thing, it's a nice way to then be able to share best practices and things. I know U.S. Conference of Mayors was very much involved in that process, so just, I like that approach.
Madam Mayor, the grant processes are aligning with that too, which is an area that we need to work towards. Again, with our new public engagement manager, we hope to be going after some of the larger grants as well.
Great. Well, good luck with that. Okay, anything else? All right. Thank you very much. And our next budget hearing's Monday at 2:00. It's Community Development, the Successor Agency, and the Library. We'll see you then. Okay?